Good evening, folks. We're just going to wait one or two minutes for the chairman. And if he's not here in a minute or two, we'll get started. So just bear with us. We'll wait a minute or two. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a public meeting of the City of Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals for October 14th. Due to the COVID pandemic, you have the option to attend and participate in person in the chambers and/or virtually through a tablet, a smartphone, or through the phone line. Just a few housekeeping matters. If you have a cellphone, please turn it off or set it to vibrate so it doesn't interrupt the meeting. We're just going to go off the agenda for one item. So we're going to take ZBA-2021-42 out of order. It's a variance special permit. The applicant is Smith Cannabis Company located at 683 Rogers Street. Smith Cannabis Company has applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for an attorney illuminated sign at 683 Rogers Street. The property is located in the regional retail zoning district and requires a variance under section 6.3.2.18. D and special permit under section 6.3.2.9D and any other relief required under the Lowell Zoning Ordinance. Is there a representative from the Smith Cannabis Company here this evening?
Yes, I am on Zoom. My name is Brandon Courier. I'm from Barlow Signs representing Smythe Cannabis.
Good evening, sir. You want to just tell us a little about your project?
Yes. So as you mentioned tonight, we're seeking a variance relief under section 6.3.2.18. D for a wall sign on a perpendicular wall to the main road at 10 square feet where three is allowed. In addition, we're seeking for a special permit approval under section 6.3.2.9D for halo illumination. As many of you are familiar with this property, the client has done some major upgrades, including this new beautiful building and a lot of site work. With the orientation scale of this building, we're looking to have an additional seven square foot of signage to identify the main entrance there on the side of the building. This sign is to scale with the building and will not be out of place with its surroundings. It'll also help to guide the wayfinding public safely into the parking lot and to identify that main door that they have. Having a sign this size, this situation will allow Smythe to utilize their branding and recognition tools in order to have more success for their business. And then as for the special permit, we're proposing halo illumination. If anybody's not familiar, it'll cast an indirect light onto the building, leaving a beautiful and subtle glow. So there'll be no direct light facing outwards towards the streets or anything. This will only aid in the look of the building. Also, this illumination will no way be a distraction to passing motorists, nor will it be an annoyance to any neighbors, especially since we're in a very business-friendly district. Thank you very much. I appreciate you hearing this case.
Thank you, sir, for your overview of your petition. If you have no further comments, we'll open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? 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 All right. Seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed, we'll open up questions and comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Nurobe. Mr. Nurobe, the floor is yours, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I've got no questions on this petition.
Thank you, Mr. Nurobe. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to ask a couple of questions. Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask about the hours of illumination. That came up in the comments from the city planning department. If the applicant could address that. And also, the strength of the illumination. I understand this is a backlit LED sign, so it seems like it'll be relatively a soft glow, but we just want to be assured that this is not going to be a bright, strong, glaring kind of light that's going to be emitted from the illuminated sign.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Yes, so the lighting coming out of the back of the sign, it's hard to put an actual, like, meter per se on it to identify the power of the light, but it is a subtle light. You won't be able, it won't be too bright, too crazy in that sense. As to speak to the hours of operation, they have not been posted yet for the business. We would like to respect any hours that you guys have provided as part of local zoning and code. Respectfully, we'd like to at least keep it open, keep the lights on an hour to two after closing and not past midnight.
Thank you. I think that's something that we can probably condition that the hours of illumination be two hours past closing or not past midnight, whichever comes first, maybe would be something we could state. I have no further questions, other than I think that this is very good-looking graphics. And I support the fact that you did not go right to the limit of the 100 square feet allowable, that you stopped at 80 square feet, showing some ability to not go too far, so I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Procop. Mr. Procop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually support this project as well. As I drove by that property, it looks like it was immaculate, the build. I think it's obviously a great addition to the city, so with the conditions that mentioned by Mr. McCarthy, I think once those are met, I think that we should just move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Procop. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, through Mr. Chairman. I like the design of the sign. It actually looks really nice on the side of the building and that it's good to see that this operation has been kind of sitting there for a while, and I know it's been a long road in going, but it's been up for a while, but it seems to be going in the, almost close to opening. But the one thing about the illumination, I think what we standard, what we usually standard what we do, Mr. Chairman, is one hour before, hours illumination of one hour before sunrise to one hour after sunset or closing, whichever comes later. I think we should keep that standard, I mean, because it's, we've done that for other businesses. I think even the Hogan Tire that's in that, on that area, that recently had a signage put up, I think we did the same thing. So if the applicant is okay with that condition as far as illumination is concerned, I would be supportive, I'd be supportive of this petition, so. I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Briere. Mr. Briere, the floor is yours, sir.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Briere. Sir, I think you heard the comments of the board. It's in full support. It's pretty straightforward, myself included. If you're okay with the condition, with the standard, we have one hour before sunrise or one hours after sunset or an hour before closing, an hour after closing, we'll go through with the vote. Do you have any questions, sir, before we move forward with the vote?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we accept those terms and conditions. We would like to follow those. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can we have a motion, please?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add to the condition that one hour after closing, but not beyond 12:00 a.m., since that was listed as, we don't have an hour of closing right now from them, but it did say it wouldn't go beyond 12:00 a.m. or midnight. So I think that that'd be helpful to identify, since we don't have a closing time established by the applicant yet. Is anyone opposed to that, adding to the condition?
I'm fine with that, as long as my colleagues are, I think that's fine, Mr. McCarthy.
Mr. McCarthy, I didn't hear exactly what you said. Can you?
I'm sorry. So the condition will read, the illumination will be from one hour before sunrise to one hour after closing, but not beyond 12:00 a.m.
Yep, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy, for that clarification.
Okay, so through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA-2021-42 for a special permit for internally illuminated sign at 683 Rogers Street with the condition that the hours of illumination be from one hour before sunrise to one hour after closing, but not beyond 12:00 a.m.
All right. Motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Callahan. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve the condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with condition.
Member Briere.
Approved with conditions.
Member Procop.
Approved with conditions.
Member Nuroge.
Approved with conditions.
All right, thank you, sir. That was for the variance, so we'll do another vote for the special permit, Mr. McCarthy.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA-2021-42 for a special permit for 683 Rogers Street for internal illuminated sign with the condition that the hours of illumination be one hour before sunrise to one hour after closing, but not beyond 12:00 a.m.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy for the special permit.
Second.
Second by Mr. Procop. Roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Briere.
Approved with conditions.
Member Procop.
Approved with conditions.
Member Nuroge.
Approved with conditions.
All right, sir. Both your special permit and your variance have been approved tonight. I wish you the best of luck on your project.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, and thank you to everybody for being a part of this. Have a great night.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Moving on to our scheduled agenda, on the contingent business, there's none. On the new business, we have ZBA-2021-40. The petition is a variance. The applicant is James Zorba, property located at 44 Rock Street. James Zorba has applied to the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals and the Lowell Planning Board for a special permit, site plan review and a variance approval to redevelop existing lot into an 11 space, approximately 5,004 square feet, parking area at 44 Rock Street. The property is located in the UMF zoning district and requires special permit approval pursuant to section 12.6H for the proposed use and site plan review pursuant to section 11.4 to construct a parking area greater than 4,000 square feet. The proposal will also require variance from the ZBA pursuant to section 6.1.10 for the setback from the side yard property line and for any other relief required on the Lowell Zoning Ordinance. Is there an applicant?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell Masque. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Jim Zorbas. Also with us tonight is Paul Campbell of Chess Engineering. Paul is the engineer for the project. As the chairman mentioned, we're here before you tonight seeking a variance pursuant to 6.1.10 for minimum setback from the side yard property line for the property owned by the applicant at 44 Rock Street. The property line in question is the easterly sideline of the property. We're providing a one-foot setback on that lot line. The required side yard setback is three pursuant to the ordinance, so we're seeking relief for two feet from that setback requirement. In addition to the application and the narrative, I've provided the board with a site plan, a landscape plan, and a rendering of the parking lot once completed. After my presentation, Paul will review the site plan with the board. Currently, the property consists of a vacant parcel of land containing about 5,400 square feet of land in the UMF zoning district. The property is fenced in, it's a fenced-in vacant lot consisting of loose gravel with some asphalt. The sidewalk in front of the lot is in disrepair. The application, this application was presented to the planning board last Monday on October 4th for site plan approval and issuance of a special permit, both of which were received with conditions. The subject property is a companion application with the redevelopment of 116 and 128 Fletcher Street into 11 residential units. The planning board also approved the redevelopment of the Fletcher Street project by issuing a special permit and approving the site plan for that project. So from the planning board's perspective, both 44 Rock Street and 116 and 128 Fletcher Street are approved. This board also approved the variance request for the previous developer for the Fletcher Street project for relief from lot area for dwelling unit and the off-street parking requirements. That occurred back in October of 2019. That approval was conditioned upon that applicant finding eight off-street parking spaces. The previous developer was unable to secure any additional parking and gave up on the project. The current applicant purchased the Fletcher Street property and 44 Rock Street property in question tonight and have been pursuing permits for both projects. So with the benefit of the 50% reduction of the required off-street parking requirement pursuant to 6.1.66, as approved by the planning board, the total parking requirement for the Fletcher Street project is now 11 off-street parking spaces. There are 11 units there. With the 50% reduction, we only need one parking space per unit. Because the 44 Rock Street, because this site is located within 400 feet of the Fletcher Street project, the applicant can use the parking associated with this lot to fulfill the off-street parking requirements of the Fletcher Street project. At Fletcher Street, we have a total of four off-street parking spaces on site. The proposed private parking area at 44 Rock would consist of a total of 11 parking spaces, of which seven would be allocated for the sole use of the Fletcher Street project. Therefore, with the approval of the requested variance tonight, we'll be able to provide seven off-street parking spaces at Rock Street and four at Fletcher Street for a total of 11, meeting our requirements pursuant to the ordinance. The reuse of this lot as a private parking lot will be a significant enhancement to this neighborhood. The finished product will result in a, in this vacant, very unattractive lot being converted to a nicely landscaped, well-maintained, private parking lot, which complements the neighborhood and, as I mentioned a couple of times, allows for the residents of Fletcher Street to have off-street parking nearby. In review of the staff comments, comment number three speaks to the landscape open space requirement. Paul will go through this in detail, but we're providing sufficient landscape open space within the parking area. We have slightly over 4,000 square feet of paved area and therefore require two shade trees. The planning board approved the site plan with one shade tree, since we are proposing significant shrubbery around the perimeter of the lot. Comment number four speaks to the screening requirements. We've agreed to a condition with the planning board that requires the final landscape plan be approved by DPD staff, so the applicant will be consulting with the DPD staff on that condition. We're happy to incorporate this, that condition into this approval, if the board's inclined to approve. Comment number five, the staff suggests the applicant restore the paved walkway in front of the lot. The applicant has agreed to do that, again, as a condition of the special permit and site plan approval, and we're happy to incorporate that as well. Comment number six, staff notes that with additional landscaping in place, the DPD would support this proposal. Again, we're going to be consulting and getting approval from the DPD staff with regard to our final landscape plan, so we're happy to accommodate that request. The relief sought by the applicant can be granted without any detriment to the public good or without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent of the zoning for this district. So we therefore request approval of this variance tonight. Paul, I'll turn the meeting over to you. You can run through the site plan, if you don't mind, for the board members.
Sure thing. Thank you, John. So for the record, my name is Paul Campbell. I'm the land surveyor and civil engineer of record for the project, Chess Engineering. My office is at 110 Canal Street in Lowell. So I'll share my screen here and bring up the site plan for 44 Rock Street. So currently, 44 Rock Street is a vacant lot, mostly consisting of gravel, and a portion of it is paved and used by the commercial lot to the east that is also owned by the applicant. Right now, the plan is, as John said, is to use this property as a parking lot, providing 11 parking spaces in addition to the parking spaces of the 116 Fletcher property. The relief we're seeking from the board is from the three-foot landscape requirement from the side setback on the east side. Currently, there's zero feet of landscaping provided between the lot in question and the commercial. We are proposing to provide one foot, which doesn't meet the zoning requirements, but is an improvement over existing conditions. And please also note that the property to the east is a commercial property. We provided the proper landscaping along the south and west, which are abutting residential apartments, so we're properly screening those areas and providing the proper landscaping, but we're seeking relief from the abutting commercial property. So the project, basically, it's a standard redevelopment of a vacant parcel. We're going to add pavement to an unpaved parking area. We're providing stormwater treatment for a stormwater runoff that'll be coming off of the new pavement. And it's been approved by the planning board for our site plan with conditions that stormwater will meet staff standards. So there's not much else to talk about for Rock Street. Fletcher Street, which John will speak on later, as you said, these are companion applications, and not much has changed since the 2019 application, for which I was also the land surveyor and civil engineer of record for that project and prior applicant. So with that, I'll turn it back to John, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. So after the public has a chance to speak on the project, we're happy to answer any questions of the board members.
Thank you for your presentation. Now, we'll open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. We're going to open up questions and comments to the board now. The chair recognizes Mr. Procop. Mr. Procop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any improvement to a dilapidated property is a good thing, so I do appreciate the presentation. And the fact that you are looking to accommodate parking for potential residents for when the other property is developed, I think it's, it would be good for the neighborhood. I don't think it's a detriment. I think that that neighborhood does need some improvement, so I would be looking forward to, you know, seeing this come to fruition. The question that I see that was mentioned, that was discussed with planning was, you will be required to obtain a stormwater permit, and I'm wondering if you have pursued that already, or if you are. Have you?
Yeah, I could speak on that. I have spoken with city staff already with the stormwater. They're reviewing our current design, and I'm going to be revising the stormwater design for their comments when we get more comments back from staff. But yes, they've already reviewed it, and they seem to be supportive of the project and the design.
That'll be something that I think the board would love to see, you know, before moving forward. I don't have any additional questions right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Procop. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Specifically, the application came in front of the planning board, and they resulted with four conditions that I think addressed the comments pretty well. And if I have support from my fellow colleagues here, I think we'd like to adopt those four conditions as well. And if I have support from my fellow colleagues here, I think we'd like to adopt those four conditions as well. First one, the applicant shall reconstruct the sidewalks in front of the site at the city standards. Second, the applicant shall meet all requirements of Lowell Regional Wastewater Utility. Third, the applicant shall submit a landscape and lighting plan subject to DPD approval. And the fourth is the seven parking spaces shall be clearly marked for an exclusive use of residents of the 116 and the 128 Fletcher Street development. I think that pretty clearly identifies the pieces that we need to complete for the application, and I'd like to see those conditions added to our approval. But I'm really supportive of finding this piece of land that is relatively close to these developments and see it developed into off-street parking to utilize the development, so the developments in those two sites can go forward and be utilized by them. And the fact that we're going to have landscaping and lighting and fencing really raise the bar in that neighborhood, although the neighborhood is definitely improving significantly in the last few years with the projects that have taken place. So this just adds one more. So I think I really would like to see this go forward with those conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
And the applicant's happy to adopt those conditions.
Thank you, Attorney Gary. Appreciate it. Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really don't have, well, I may have one or two questions, but otherwise, the project is, it makes total sense for the area, especially when it's coinciding with the project that's going on at 116, 128 Fletcher Street, and which we'll be addressing afterwards as far as the extension is concerned. I guess the one question I do have, Attorney Gary, with regards to the condition that the Planning Board put on, on the seven parking spaces being clearly marked for exclusive use for 116, 128, what's the plans for that? Is it going to be signage, or is it going to be marked on the spaces themselves?
There'll be signage.
Okay.
In front of each space.
Yep. No, I just want to make sure that's clarified. I mean, I don't want to see it be something that you just mark it on the spot, but nobody sees it when you're driving in, and people are just parking there, whatever. But I'm sure the managers of the property of 128, 116 will be monitoring it profusely to make sure that it's not being used for other means. So, yeah, otherwise, I think this clearly meets the criteria for a variance. It's only, the variance that's being sought is only for the side yard, the setback from the side yard property line. It's looking at a difference of two feet, but as long as the landscape, the landscaping is taking up a lot of the portion of the siding of the, oh, the proposed landscaping would be taking up a proportion of the siding of the lot line, so, which would beautify that area and that lot. So I would be in full approval of this, provided, and I agree with the fact that we should adopt the same conditions from the Planning Board, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
The parking plan is absolutely vital and a key component to the continued redevelopment of the area. I support the petition. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. Norobe. Mr. Norobe, the floor is yours, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the project seems like it will be beneficial to the neighborhood, and I'm inclined to support it. Benefits outweigh the relief, the two feet of setback relief being sought, and with the conditions that have been outlined, you know, the landscaping, the screens, and the sidewalk, I'm ready to move on and support the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norobe. You know, I really think this development makes sense. Like my colleague said, it enhances the neighborhood, and parking is also vital just in that area in the neighborhood. So this just makes sense, and the relief that you're seeking tonight is, in my opinion, very minimal. So I'm in support of this with the conditions that we've mentioned already. So if we have no more questions or comments, and if you're agreeable to all the comments and conditions, we'll move forward with a vote tonight, Attorney Gary.
Yes, we are agreeable with all the conditions and comments, and we agree that this project is a vast improvement to the neighborhood. The neighborhood is in the process of being transformed right now with this project, the Fletcher Street project, and other projects that I know of that are going on in the area. So it's an exciting time for that area, for that neighborhood, and we thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. If we have no more comments or questions from the board, we'll move forward with a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2021-40 for variance at 44 Rock Street for side yard setback from the property line with the previously mentioned four conditions adopted by the Planning Board.
All right. Motion by Mr. McCarthy. Second by Mr. Prokop. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Brier.
Approved with conditions.
Member Prokop.
Approved with conditions.
Member Noroge.
Approved with conditions.
All right. Your variance has been approved. So now we'll take an item, agenda item out of order. It's under Other Business. It's the variance extension of 116 and 128 Fletcher Street. The applicant is seeking a one-year extension to a variance originally granted on October 17, 2019, and extended on September 28, 2020. The applicant receives site plan review and special permit approval from the Planning Board on October 4, 2021. Mr. Gary, did you want to talk a little bit about this extension?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, for the record, my name is John Geary, Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm representing the owner of this property as well, James Zorvis and Jeffrey Colley. As the chairman mentioned, the variance was approved back in October of 2019 for relief from the lot area per dwelling unit requirement and for off-street parking. We've just done away with the off-street parking variance that we needed, so that's not really an issue. But in order to allow us to get this project, both the Fletcher Street project and the Rock Street project off the ground, we're asking for another year extension on this variance. As I mentioned in my last presentation, the initial developer, the first developer gave up on the project when he could not find off-street parking. The current owner and applicant was creative in his efforts in finding parking. He located parking, and as we just found out, we have parking now available at 44 Rock Street. So for those reasons, we're requesting an additional year on the variance.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Gary. So we're going to open up this extension. Anyone who wants to have any comments on it opens to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this extension request? Anyone wishing to speak on the extension request from the public? Or seeing none, that portion? The public hearing is closed for the extension comments. Now we'll open up questions, comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to ask about the previously listed conditions that we had back in 2019. There were three conditions that we had on this application. One, it looks like we've met tonight with the additional off-street parking spaces, but we still have the other two conditions that we'll be carrying forward, I believe, with the six-month administrative review after the occupancy permit has been issued and the applicant must work with DPD on additional transportation demand management options. Is that what we're talking about, Attorney Gary?
Well, we're really talking about the relief for the lot area per dwelling unit. We're happy to incorporate that condition as well, Member McCarthy. I think that the, you know, we do provide the required off-street parking. In addition to that, we're in close proximity to the New Hamilton Canal Garage that recently opened. We're within walking distance to the Market Basket, not far up the street on Fletcher Street. We're in walking distance to the Gallagher Transportation Terminal. So there are a lot of options already. So there'll be a parking space for, one parking space for each unit here. So I don't think that the micro mobility solutions are as important, but we're happy to incorporate that. We do show a bike rack, you know, bike storage on our site plan. We went through that with the Planning Board last Monday. So yes, we're happy to incorporate that if the board desires.
I guess I would like to ask, has there been any movement on the, working with DPD on the additional transportation demand management options?
There really hasn't been at this time, Member McCarthy. The focus has been on finding the parking, the additional parking.
Then if you don't mind, I think I would like to see those two conditions carry over with this extension, but I'll listen to my fellow board members, but that would be my preference, even though I think that with the addition of that parking garage, you're right, that we seem to have plenty of parking available. But I know we had these conditions back in 19 and carried them in '20, so I kind of think for consistency, we should carry them forward. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't really have any concerns about this. It makes sense, especially in light of the granting of the variance for 44 Rock Street, where we're now providing parking for this project and going to see that this project finally gets off the ground and revitalizes the neighborhood like everything else is going forward in that neighborhood. So I have no concerns about granting the extension, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We need to keep this project alive and keep it in the pipeline. I support the extension. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. Norobe. Mr. Norobe, the floor is yours, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have no issue granting the variance extension. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Norobe. The chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no issues, along with my colleagues, of granting the extension, especially the fact that it's a new owner. So I would assume that they would need the time to put all of the details together. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. I agree with my colleagues. I think this is a very vital and important project, and, you know, I want to support that, and I want to keep this project moving forward in the right direction. I do agree with my colleagues in terms of being consistent in the continuity. We have these conditions that we talked about in 2019, so we'll keep them with this extension request since the parking has been met. But what's to do is six months administrative review, and then the transportation demand with DPD working with that, around that. So, Mr. Attorney Gary, if you have no questions or comments, we'll move forward with a vote for this.
No question, the comments. We're happy to incorporate those conditions again.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a variance extension for one year at 116 and 128 Fletcher Street with the two conditions that were previously adopted in 2019, 2020.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Callahan. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Peck.
Approve the one-year extension request with the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve one-year extension with conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the one-year extension with conditions.
Member Brier.
Approve the extension.
Member Prokop.
Approve the conditions.
Member Noroge.
Approve the extension.
All right. Mr. Gary, your extension has been approved. Wish you the best of luck on your project.
Thank you all.
Thank you for coming this evening. Have a good night. Going back into our scheduled agenda under new business, we have ZBA-2021-43. The petition is a variance. The applicant is 78 Menosex LLC.
Fletcher Street, correct? We're in Fletcher Street.
No. Okay, okay. Strike that previous. Under new business, we're hearing ZBA-2021-41, a variance. Advocate is Christopher Natalie at 43 Fletcher Street. Christopher Natalie has applied for site plan review and special permit approval from the Planning Board, and variance approval from the zoning board appeals to instruct a mixed-use building consisting of 20 dwelling units, and then approximately 3,442 square feet commercial space on the first floor. The property is in the urban mixed-use, UMU zoning district and requires site plan review under Section 11.4.2, special permit approval under Section 12.1E for the proposed use, and under Section 6.1.66 to reduce residential and non-residential parking requirements by 50%. The project requires a variance approval from the zoning board appeals for relief from the off-street parking requirement under Section 6.1.4D, under Section 5.1 for the proposed floor area ratio and land area per dwelling unit, and any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, Counselor. How are you?
Good evening. George Theodoro, 133 Market Street, representing the applicant, Christopher Natale. We had, we were recently before the Planning Board on September 23, in which we were before them for site plan approval, as well as for special permits for use and special permits to reduce both the residential and the commercial parking requirement under the ordinance. This property at 43 Fletcher Street is the Old Fury's Bar, which has been closed for years. My client purchased it in 2015. It had been closed for about three years prior to that, and it is in complete disrepair. The applicant bought it with the idea of redeveloping it for residential use. We started this back in 2017. We went through a design review process with the City of Lowell Historic Board, and we met with them several times, and you will hear from both the architect Barry Gannick, who is here tonight, you'll also hear from Matt Hammer, who is the site engineer. And a great deal of work was put into the design of the structure, and the Historic Board, in the comments that you have back here, you see that they are favorable with respect to the scale, the size, and design of the project. They still, we still have to go forward and obtain approval, technical approval, from the Historic Board that maintains design review approval. And for details and the texture of the materials that would be used, and that will be going forward as well. But the other important part of this project is, is this section of the city is, has a great deal of activity going on at the present time. We have the improvements for the Lord Overpass that are going on, that are going to be significant vehicular and pedestrian transportation improvements. We have the Hamilton Canal District, which is within a seven or eight-minute walk from this property. We have going on right now the redevelopment of the historic McKittrick Building directly across the street on Fletcher Street from our project, which is a wonderful complement, I would have to say, from a residential development that we are looking for, for 20 units here, and across the street for the development of the commercial use. There has not been a lot going on in this section for a long time, but, you know, we just heard from Mr. Geary up the street, we have something going on on Rock Street over there. We have this project going in this section of the city here. And... And a part of this goes back 20 years or so when the acre redevelopment plan went through. And this, this property at the time was in use, so there was not slated for redevelopment by the city. If it had been in this state that it is right now at that time, it would have been earmarked for redevelopment. So my client has been aggressive in that, in buying this and making this, this, this design for a 20-unit apartment building and a design and scale that the historic board right now, through the comments, believes, applies here and fits here. We applied with the planning board for the site plan review, which was approved. They, they allowed for the special permit for the use on this project of over seven units. They allow for the special permit for the reduction in parking. We have a letter from the, the, the planning director, I mean, the parking director, that we have 40 spaces in the Hamilton Canal Garage that are available for the residential parking. We also have nine spaces available in the letter that you have with your materials for the commercial units. It's an interesting, so that letter says the spaces are available. It's interesting under the ordinance, you know, if we had leases for those spaces in the public parking facility, then under 6.61, we would have parking as a matter of right for the project. But I can't stand before you right now and say that we have it leased. We have, have them made available. That's the policy of the city right now. So as a result of that, in order for this project to move, move forward, I'm here before you on requesting a variance for parking, for off-street parking. Now, part of the approval that we have with the planning board was, Member Malovich was very insistent, and we agreed, without a doubt, that we are going to, and it's in the decision as a condition, that we are going to, the applicant builder has to provide off-street parking for his tenants. And that is a condition here. Also, part of what we're doing here, we're talking about urban living. We're talking about one-bedroom apartments. A specific demographic is going to be earmarked to go ahead and live there. We have one-bedroom apartments. We, we, we believe it's going to be a younger millennial crowd who is going to be interested in, in urban living. And here we have something exciting. We're, you're seven or eight minutes away from the Hamilton Canal District, in which it's going to be completely redone. And more amenities will be there with respect to their transportation needs. They are a short walk to the Gallagher Transportation Terminal. If they're interested in taking the bus, we have the routes, the Route 6 bus, which is, there's a bus stop right there at the, the textile museum that they can take and move around downtown. They can take that bus up to Market Basket. They can take a bus, I believe that goes up to the University of Lowell as well. And the planning board wanted to have a requirement that we place bike racks. And we redesigned our floor plan so that we show the bike racks. We agree with that. We will have a loading zone that we proposed adjacent to the property. It's conditioned upon getting approval from the city council and having a designated loading zone, just like you see for a commercial loading zone. It's, it's where tenants can drive up to the building in proximity to the building and unload their groceries, have a moving truck come up there, unload their furniture. And that's something that's a condition that we will be doing. We also will revise the floor plans, which we will show where we're going to have our trash and recycling. First floor is going to have trash, recycling, and the laundry area will be there. And we also need to obtain the historic board review. Those are all formal conditions. And we will agree with your approval here to have those as conditions of approval here before you. What I would like to do, and, and I understand the scale of the project is 20 units. It's needed so that we could develop this economically. Also, when you take a look at this building juxtaposed to the building across the street, both across the street from McKittrick's and across the street from the building across from Worthing Street there, it fits. And we think this is going to be a wonderful complement to the neighborhood and redevelopment of the neighborhood. That said, we don't think, we don't believe it's going to have any detriment or approval for this, for the variances, for the zoning ord, for, at detriment to the zoning ordinance. And it's going to be no detriment to the public good. It's going to be an enhancement to the public good in the redevelopment of this project, producing more residential units, quality residential units, and also adding this to the tax base, which is going to be substantial. That being said, what I would like is, I would like Mr. Barry Gannick to come up and to discuss a bit about the, the design and, and, and how the building works. And then we can later have Mr. Hammer come up and speak.
Thank you, Attorney Theodore.
Good evening. Barry Gannick, Gannick Architects, One River Road in Carlisle, Mass. It's been a long time that we've been working on this project, dating back to earlier than 2017, I believe. And through a lot of discussion with Lowell Historic Commission, we came up with this concept of a building that is meant to be a contemporary take on a standard multifamily building type that exists in Lowell, that has existed for, since before the turn of the 20th century. And is actually similar to buildings that Mr. Natali owns on Market Street, just at the other end of this. And that includes the projection over the sidewalk of the bay windows. That, that's a standard detail that you will see in and around Lowell on these projects. And the size of the units are appropriate for the, the market as we understand it. They average about 780 square feet apiece, you know, directed towards the assumed demographic that is looking for space in this area. The materials are conventional, are historic. They are used in slightly new ways that we're not trying to create a, a replica of the historic structures, but a, just a, a modern, current interpretation of this existing building type. And simply put, that, that's what we've been trying to do. Okay? Thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir.
Good evening. For the record, Matt Hammer, Limplex Engineering in Sevigny, 10 George Street in Lowell. I'm going to walk through the site here. So we have Fletcher Street here, and we have Worthing, Worthing Street here. And we also have Hayden Street that comes around the back of some mixed-use buildings in the rear here. There's also a roadway access here that dead ends at the curb. And there's a landscaped park here and a small parking area here, which is not part of our site. That's owned by the City of Lowell. And our property is here with a lot area of 3,670 square feet. This is the proposed footprint that consumes the majority of the parcel. And there's two walkways that come out of the rear exit in the, in the rear of the building to Fletcher and the side of the building off of Worthing Street. It's a six-story building. The ground floor will be a, a retail space. And then there'll be five stories of residential totaling 20 units. And that's essentially the, the project, and the majority of it is the building itself. I can take any questions from the board.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Hammer.
Incidentally, back in, in 2017, 2018, we had been in discussions with, with the City of Lowell to purchase the adjacent parcel as, as a surplus property by the city. At the time, the redevelopment of the, that was all beginning, the Lord Overpass designing everything, and they weren't sure what was going to happen with that property in the redesign of it. So we just left it in discussions, and we're picking those back up right now. But we're not making that as a condition on, on, on this, on the project, but we are looking to purchase it. In addition, the parking along further up is, that you see there on that site, that's owned by the National Park. And we haven't had any discussions with them, and I, I don't know if that's something that's viable at all. But certainly, the, the, the piece of property with the city is something we're interested in, in reaching out and finding someone who's, who's capable of, you know, to negotiate that and move forward with it. So we're ready to take any questions?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Theodore. So now we'll open up questions or comments to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor. Seeing none, that portion of the public here is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition, in opposition. Seeing none, that portion of the public here is closed. We'll open up questions and comments to the board now. The Chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the project, and my question was going to be, Attorney Theodore, about the adjacent parking lot with the, with the city and how that's going to factor into this whole thing. Because my thoughts were being, you know, down, the first floor is going to be commercial. That would be a nice area to keep the commercial area. But since the city owns it, as long as you're, you're in the process of negotiating.
Yeah, that's our, that's our plan, to use that for the commercial portion. I think that makes that, it's very difficult to lease commercial space from talking to some of my clients.
Yeah.
And that would make it, it viable.
Yeah. No, agreed.
We are pursuing that.
Okay. No, no, that, that, that's good. That, that answers, that answers that question. Because that was going to be my first inquiry about that adjacent parcel as far as the city owning it and what the intentions are with that. But as, I, I, I trust it. Obviously, it's to your client's benefit to keep, trying to see if you can negotiate with the city on.
And it is, in theory, what the city would do, would, to look and see if there's a utility for the city to own the property. And if not, then they would offer it to and a butter. And they would vote its surplus property first and then vote and have an appraisal done of the property, and we'd enter into a land acquisition agreement.
Yeah, okay.
That's down the road, hopefully.
Yep, no problems. That, that, that makes total sense to me, so. Also, and I, I always appreciate the packages when you provide the cultural reference resources inventory. And it, it astounded me that, I didn't realize that that building's been sitting there since 18, well, 1865.
It is amazing.
The Civil War era. It's like, gee, that's amazing.
Well, I, I was told a while back that that area there in, 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 somewhere in that square area there, that there used to be a horse auction. The horse auction that went through the, into, right in through to the early 1950s.
Wow.
So, but that, that, the historical inventory that you have there is, is interesting.
No, it's fascinating. And, and it's good to see that, and I, I, I like the, the way the project's structured out. And it's good to see that something's being done with, with it. You know, Fury's was an institution there for a long, long time. It was sad when it closed down. But, and it's, I'm amazed that it's been this long now, that it's just been sitting there just with no activity, and now finally, something's being done to get it developed. And that's, that's fascinating. That's great, so. As far as the relief is concerned, you're looking for, it's FAR. The FAR is 600 and, but the, and the land area per dwelling unit, 183 square feet proposed is very minimal. And I, I do believe that you meet the criteria for, meet the criteria for variance on this. The project looks fantastic. You'll meet the off-street parking with the letter, I believe. And, and hopefully, again, that, that'll, that'll all be abated. Hopefully, that'll be abated with further negotiations with the city on that vacant parcel next to the, next to the lot. So I will be in approval of this, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The Chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
This project clearly is an exciting and significant component to the total transformation that's occurring in this area. I'm really proud to be a witness to it and play some minor role in its occurrence. Lowell needs this type of investment to continue our progress. Mr. Chairman, I look very favorably upon this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The Chair recognizes Mr. Norobe. Mr. Norobe, the floor is yours, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to echo what my fellow board members have, have said. This project will definitely enhance the neighborhood and the building. I, it seems to, the, the petition satisfies 6165 and 6 of the zoning ordinance. And the fact that we have 21-bedroom apartments and they have obtained 20 parking, parking spaces in the parking garage, I think makes it even better. I had a couple of questions, though. The, the parking, access to the parking is not clear. Are we, are they going to access the parking via Hayden Street or Fletcher?
No, the, the, the parking is accessed for, for the parking garage would be, the, the residents would walk out, take a left on Dutton Street, and at the corner of Dutton and Broadway would cross the street, and they would, they would get to the, the parking garage. It's probably an eight, eight-minute walk.
Yeah, I'm talking about the parking for the commercial.
For the commercial?
Yeah.
We, the, the commercial parking that we have is also unfortunate. We have it through the, the parking garage as well.
Oh, okay.
We're looking forward to, to purchasing the adjacent lot and the adjacent lot to satisfy the parking. But we have not entered, we have not been able to secure that yet.
Okay. I, I think I was confused by the, I see parking spaces.
Yes, I, yeah, that's not, we don't own that. That's owned by the city.
Okay, that's, that makes it clear. And as far as the trash and recycling, you say it's going to be on the first floor?
Yeah, on the first floor. We're going to have an area there that is specifically for the trash receptacles and the recycling receptacles, and they'll be rolled out on a weekly basis. We can have private trash pickups for that. The, and as a matter of fact, as a requirement of the special, of the special permit and site plan review that we received, we have to submit a, a floor plan for that, so, which we are going to do. We have to show that, show that in, in some revised plans.
So I look forward to seeing that new floor plan. I don't think I have any other further questions. I think this is a very beneficial project, and I'll be, I'm, I'm, I'll be willing to support it with those.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norobe. The Chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an example of the great revitalization of, of Lowell. And I think with what's going on in that neighborhood with the court and all the reconstruction that's going on, I, I think it'll be a great addition. And I, I think what you said earlier, Mr. Theodore, that this would be an area for a lot of millennials, millennials, sorry, who would probably be looking to walk around the city. The architecture looks nice. I, I think it's, it'd be great, great addition. I don't think it'd be any derogation to the neighborhood. And I would look forward in favor of seeing this project completed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. The Chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just ask if the applicant, Mr. Theodore, could read the... the conditions that were part of the approval for the site plan approval from the planning board? Because I'm thinking that these might be conditions that we'd adopt as well.
I think that that would be appropriate, to have the conditions that were approved through the planning board to incorporate them in the decision here with the Board of Appeals. Do you want me to read through them?
Is that something you could read, just so everyone hears it fresh? And he could maybe?
Okay, condition number one, the applicant shall submit revised floor plans that show the location of the bike racks and e-bikes. Number two, the applicant shall work with the city council to seek permission to add a loading area in front of the subject property. Condition three, the landlord shall provide parking to tenants in the HCID garage, forty residential spaces, and nine commercial. Condition four, the applicant shall submit revised floor plans showing the trash, recycling, and waste collection room. Condition number five, the application shall submit a transportation demand management plan to outline alternative transportation options that will compensate for the lack of onsite parking, subject to approval by DPD staff. Condition six, the applicant shall receive final approval from the city stormwater team. And condition number seven, the application is subject to historic board review.
I think that completes the comments, especially from the city DPD department, so I think I'd like to see us support the adoption of the seven conditions that were previously stated in the site plan approval by the planning board. I just want to ask, though, about the plan itself, because in the floor plans, you show balconies facing the north side, where there's currently a building that's about one story high. So, the balconies would work if the building that currently is there stays one story, but I don't know if the balconies are part of the final design or just a schematic at this point. It seems as though that that north side elevation is a little tricky, because you're right up against the property line.
Yeah, you're speaking to the, I don't know what side, where the one-level story is where the restaurant is behind it.
So, no, I'm speaking, I'm sorry, so northeast side? There are balconies adjacent to the stairwell on the northeast side, on the floor plans for the residential units, floors two through six? And they would be up against the property line, and so.
Do we have that side, an elevation of that side?
It's actually on the floor plan, not in elevation, but on the floor plan, you're showing balconies right on the property line, and so that.
On the north side, you're asking?
The northeast side, if you will, north side, yes.
Okay, currently, in the plans that we have, which is here, we have a larger floor plan. We're showing balconies on the south and west side only right now.
Mr. McCarthy, there's only going to be balconies facing Fletcher Street and Wartham Street.
Okay, then there are spaces that appear as balconies in apartment one and two on the floor plan, typical floor plan dated ten twenty-three seventeen.
Those are, those are the egress out to the walkway on the northerly side.
That wouldn't be typical for the floor plan on the second floor, third floor, fourth floor, fifth floor, sixth floor, and those would be above the walkway. So I think those are balconies, just as they appear in apartment three and four. Is that correct?
Was that the balcony?
On this rendering, this shows on the east side, adjacent to that future parking lot that we're hoping to get.
All right.
There could be balconies there. That's what you're referring to? That rendering there?
Do you have the floor plan available?
I have it.
It's just that they don't work visible.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so they have to switch into here and here, maybe. And then they could work, but. It's perfect. So the north side?
North side.
Correct, and there's a building currently there?
One story.
But, we don't know if that's going to change into.
Could you, right.
And you're relying on balconies on the second floor to the sixth floor for apartment one and two, and then on the upper levels?
We can modify that, we wouldn't put it there.
I would suggest that we just add that as a condition, that you revise the plan to accommodate whatever is built on the adjacent property, so that you don't entertain something that wouldn't be successful, such as balconies. Yeah.
Yeah, that, we'll modify the floor, the floor plan on the, is that the east side?
The northerly side.
Northerly side.
And east side.
Well, the, the.
East side is here.
Yep, the side facing Dutton is going to have a balcony.
Under the assumption we get the parking there, and that site doesn't get developed?
Yeah, so, I think.
You don't own it, and so we don't know if that plant.
Right, right. So.
So, Mr. McCarthy, I think it would just be the northerly side for now.
The northerly side, right, it's just.
Yep, directly adjacent to that abutting building there.
To accommodate whatever is necessary to accommodate developing, you know, that site, we don't know if that site's going to be another six-story house, you know, or apartment.
Correct.
And a mirror image of this twin.
Yep.
It could be.
I agree, I agree.
All right, that's all I had for comments.
So it would just be the northerly side.
Just the northerly side that faces the existing building.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. I agree with my colleagues, I think this is an amazing project. Thank you, Mr. Natalia, for your investment in the city and the community. You know, housing is always needed, you know, I think, I think with the parking situation you have, you know, the garage parking, and, you know, hopefully, you know, you might be able to get the adjacent lot, like you said, as well. So, if we have no more further comments or questions, we'll move to a vote with the conditions we discussed, the seven, adopt the seven conditions from the planning board, and then revise a plan for the property on the north side.
Three, Mr. Chairman, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA twenty-two-one dash forty-one for variances for forty-three Fletcher Street to accommodate, to adopt the seven conditions by the planning board, and an additional condition to modify the floor plans, the residential floor plans, to accommodate the site at the northerly side.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Callahan. Can we have a roll call, please?
Could I just clarify the condition? So, you'd like to modify the floor plans to accommodate what on the north side?
So, the development of the site at the north side, we don't know if that site is going to remain as is, and if it's going to allow.
The what on the north side?
The, to accommodate the development of the site on the north side.
Okay.
Because as it stands, the plan shows windows and balconies overlooking a one-story building, but we don't know if the development on that north side could be a two, three-story building, and then the windows and balconies would no longer work, so.
Okay, okay.
Accommodate the development, whatever that means, you know, we don't know.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy, and thank you, Ms. Segliana, for that. And.
So now we'll do the roll call.
Yeah, we'll do a roll call, if that's okay.
Chairman, pack.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the conditions.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve the conditions.
Member Noroge.
Approve the conditions.
All right, Mr. Theodore, your application has been approved. Conditions, we wish you the best of luck.
I want to thank you very much.
Thank you for coming this evening, and thank you for your patience. I know we took a few stuff out of order, so thank you, folks, for your patience tonight. Appreciate it. We're just going to take a brief pause, and then we'll resume in one minute. All right, thank you everyone for your patience. We're going to resume our scheduled agenda item under new business. Our next agenda item is ZBA dash twenty-two-one dash forty-three, petition as a variance. The applicant is seventy-eight Middlesex LLC. Seventy-eight Middlesex Street LLC has applied to the zoning board of appeals to redevelop the existing building, as seventy-eight Middlesex Street, into a twenty-six unit residential structure. The property is located in the downtown mixed DMUs zoning district. The project requires site plan review approval per section eleven point four and special permit approval per article twelve point one E and section eleven point three point one for the use from the planning board. The project also requires a variance approval per section six point one for relief from the off-street parking requirements and any other relief required under the Lowell ordinance. Is there a representative from the seventy-eight Middlesex Street this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and for the record, my name is John Geary of Geary and Geary LLP, thirty-two Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, seventy-eight dash eighty Middlesex Street LLC. Also with us tonight are Brian Godrow of Hancock Engineering, the engineer for the project, and Alex Yun of Monty French Design Studios. We also have Joe DeGanji, one of the principals of the LLC. The other principal, Justin McFauling, was on earlier, I know he had some conflict with childcare tonight, so he looks like he had to jump off. As the chairman mentioned, we're here before you tonight seeking relief pursuant to article six point one point four of the ordinance, which is the ordinance relative to off-street parking facilities. The ordinance requires one parking space per dwelling unit in the downtown mixed-use zoning district. The applicant is proposing twenty-six residential units at this site, and therefore would require twenty-six off-street parking spaces. The applicant cannot provide any off-street parking, so we're requesting relief of twenty-six parking spaces. We were before the planning board on October fourth, seeking site plan approval and issuance of a special permit, both of which were approved with conditions. We're also before the planning, the historic board on Monday, the eighteenth, for the historic board approval. I believe that the materials that we've previously provided of our application, the plans, and especially the narrative, give a thorough explanation of the project and how it meets the criteria for issuance of their variance, but I'll take a few minutes to summarize the project, and then I'll hand it off to Brian for site plan review, and Alex to go over the architectural aspects of the property. So seventy-eight Middlesex Street is a thirteen thousand two hundred and seventeen square foot parcel of land improved with an existing three-story building. The property was occupied by the Club Fitness Center for many years, but has been vacant and unused for the last several years. The property is located in the downtown mixed-use zoning district, also within the Jam Plan Project area and the downtown historic district. The applicant proposes to redevelop the property to house twenty-six residential units, with a mixture of studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units. The units will range in size from five hundred and fourteen square feet to a thousand and seven square feet. In addition to the units, the project will include a pool, a fitness center, tenant storage area, elevator, and bicycle storage for each tenant, each apartment. The applicant is also proposing to repurpose the paved area on the west side of the property as a fenced-in pocket park with green space, a walkway, and benches for use of the tenants. The redevelopment of this site is another key piece to the realization of the vision of the Jam Plan. The proposal significantly enhances the character of the neighborhood, it aligns with the goals of the city master plan and sustainable Lowell twenty-twenty-five's housing choice and micro-mobility aspects of that plan. And once the building's fully occupied, it'll be an economic stimulus to the neighborhood and the downtown in general. Although the applicant cannot provide any off-street parking spaces with this redevelopment, the applicant expects that the apartment size, the targeted demographic, and the micro-mobility plans associated with the redevelopment of the property will mitigate the parking demand. A survey of the nearby municipal parking facilities reveals that the tenants occupying the property will have several options for available parking. For example, the Edward J. Early Junior parking garage is directly across the street, the Hamilton Canal Innovation District garage is nearby, the Lowell Lox garage on Lawrence Street is close by, there's plenty of on-street parking along Middlesex Street and within the neighborhood. We're also very close, in very close walking distance to the Gallagher Transportation Terminal, we're about a half-mile away. The tenants of this building can get over to the market basket via the Canal Walkway and Broadway Street, and we all have the South Common, which is very close by for recreational purposes. The applicant anticipates that the residents will take advantage of the nearby public transportation and other amenities within a short, short walking distance to the property. In addition, the applicant will be providing a bike-scooter share program in conjunction with an ongoing development at one sixty Middlesex Street, which is a block away, presently under construction and owned by one of the developers of this proposal. I've also provided the board with a parking allotment letter from the City of Lowell Parking Director, which indicates that there's a sufficient availability in the early garage for overnight parking demand associated with this project. With regard to the staff comments, most speak to matters of the site plan and special permit, and I'm happy to address any questions the board has about those comments. However, comment number ten references the bike-scooter share program. As I mentioned, the applicant will be establishing a bike-scooter share program in conjunction with the property at one sixty Middlesex Street. They'll be setting that up through B-Mobile, B-E-E-Mobile, which is a micro-mobility solution vendor. They anticipate having bikes and scooters available for the residents of both properties, which also provides a fantastic micro-mobility solution for the tenants to get around that don't have access to a vehicle. It should also be noted with that, within the comments, Christine McCall, the director of the DPD, enthusiastically supports the proposal, we share her enthusiasm and hope the board does as well. Ultimately, the project will enhance, significantly enhance, the quality and character of the neighborhood without any detrimental impact to the surrounding area, or without derogating from the intent of the zoning for this district. We therefore request the approval of the variance tonight. And before I hand it off to Brian, I'd just like to go over, I mentioned earlier that the planning board approved the site plan and the special permit, issuance of the special permit with conditions, so there were four conditions, and I'll just go through those briefly, and then I'll hand it off to Brian. So the first condition was, the applicant shall submit a landscape plan subject to DBT approval. We have submitted that, we're working on finalizing it, we're also, that will be a discussion with the historic board Monday night as well. The applicant, number, the second condition is, the applicant shall. The applicant, number, the second condition is the applicant shall screen the trash storage. We're happy to do that. The third condition, the applicant shall provide a written transportation demand management plan. That's well underway. And the fourth condition, the applicant shall work with the city stormwater management team to finalize the stormwater design and obtain any required permits. Brian's been working closely with Mike Stewart and his team, so we're happy to incorporate these conditions into any approval tonight. So Brian, would you like to go through the site plan?
Absolutely. Thank you, John. For the record, Brian Godro with Hancock Associates, and I will share my screen. So this is the site plan. Middlesex Street is at the top of the page to the north, and there's an alleyway behind the existing building. The existing building takes up the majority of the lot right here. And the alleyway that's currently paved is to the right of the building, to the left-hand side of the page, starting at the passageway behind the building. We have an earmarked area for the transformer, for recycling, and waste storage dumpsters, and also a loading area. So that's how trash will be picked up, recycling will be picked up, and we anticipate any sort of temporary vehicle storage. The pocket park that John had referenced is right in this area. So that's going to be the sitting area landscaped, and Alex will dive into the details on that a little bit better. Currently, all utilities come off of Middlesex Street, the existing building, and we're anticipating reusing all of those utility connections with the exception of stormwater. So currently, stormwater is unmanaged. So basically, water hits the site and then flows out into Middlesex Street. Now, what we're doing as a part of this development is we're reconfiguring the roof for interior roof drain, and we have designed an underground infiltration system here. So we have been in contact with Lowell Regional Wastewater Utility, Mike Stewart and his team. And what we've done is we've designed and presented to him a fully compliant plan. So the stormwater management system that we propose takes roof runoff as well as surface runoff from that trash area, from the loading area, from the green space that's going to be the open part, and treats it for total suspended solids, and then infiltrates stormwater to the maximum extent possible. And then where currently stormwater flows, there's a catch basin in front of the site. What we've proposed is an overflow connection. So what we're trying to do is mitigate and infiltrate as much stormwater as possible, and then any less frequent events, like a hundred-year frequency event, will ultimately discharge into the closed drainage system of Middlesex Street, kind of where it currently goes right now. Again, we did have conversations with Mike Stewart at Lowell Regional Wastewater Utility, and this represents that fully compliant plan, and we fully anticipate coordinating with him upon construction as well, should any changes need to be made. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Alex, so that he can dive a little bit more into landscaping and the architecture of the building.
Thanks, Brian. Hello. For the record, my name is Alex Yun. I'm an architect at Monte French Design Studio, six fifty Columbus Ave, Boston, Massachusetts. I will share my screen and start my presentation. Okay, seventy-eight Middlesex, as John mentioned earlier. I'm sure the board is well aware of the location on Middlesex Street, just steps from downtown. The existing three-story building was, is a commercial space. It's been vacant for a number of years. This property is on the historic register, but it is non-contributing. The historic Oddfellows Building burned down in the nineteen forties, and this three-story commercial structure was built supposedly in the seventies, and so this is not a historic structure, but it is sound structurally, and it is what we propose to fully gut renovate for the proposed development. You can see just some street views. To the right is a view of the rear of the building from the public alleyway. Some conditions of the interior. You can see the original granite foundations, most likely from the Oddfellows Building, and then the structure is a mixture of load-bearing brick with steel and wood infill. Just a contextual snapshot, we are in the downtown zoning district, in an urban area, as well as in, as I mentioned before, the historic district, even though the building is non-contributing. Just some context of across the street, it's a kind of, put them in eclectic area in our, in our stretch here with the early parking garage, as well as a single-story commercial space, commercial building to our right. The proposed renovation is a complete gut renovation of the three-story structure. We propose to fully renovate the interiors as well as the street-facing north facade. Just quickly going into an architectural site plan. The approximately twenty-foot-wide paved lot currently there, we are proposing to fully landscape with the stormwater system that Brian previously mentioned. In that same lot in the rear towards the passageway, we're proposing a loading zone as well as the transformer and fenced-in trashed area. Along Middlesex Street, in the center, in the current existing entry location, we're proposing to have a lobby. And one wrinkle to the project that we think adds much value to the tenants and to the development is that we are proposing to cut a significant portion of the building and the floors down to grade to open up an open-air atrium or kind of daylight well, as you will, to introduce a lot of daylighting and natural light to the units, as this building is very deep. It's about ninety by ninety feet square, and so it is a struggle, it would have been a struggle to get daylighting into the deepest areas of this existing building, and so we are proposing to cut the building and introduce that open-air atrium in the project. Just a bit about the landscape. As John mentioned before, this has gone through a revision that was approved by the planning board and is subject to final review with DPD. But just a kind of a quick overview of the illustrative landscape plan. We are proposing a fenced, totally fenced area for the residents and for the tenants with a simple path that's gated to front, from front to back. We're proposing a kind of perimeter of low-lying hedge bushes, and we are also proposing that the fence is a very transparent, open metal picket fence. In the rear, we have a set of bike, outdoor bike racks, as well as a transformer area and the trash area. One change that we implemented, and you can see on this image here, is that we are proposing, under the DPD and historic board's recommendation, that we are pushing the fence and the park back out to the lot line to be co-planer with the street, sorry, with the existing street wall, so that the fence is aligned with the outboard face of the existing building. We are also going to add a shade tree to the corner on this bottom right corner. You can see here there are three existing trees that are not on our property just to the south of this proposed tree, and so we are proposing to add another tree in this area that will be on our, on our property. Just a quick plan of the basement. We are proposing individual tenant's storage with integrated bike storage, and so rather than having a singular bike room, each tenant will have their own space, storage space in the basement with a bike storage rack. There is an existing pool that was part of the, the sports club that we are proposing to bring back to life as part of the amenities package for development. You can see that pool is this white block, and then to the north of it, we have a gym space as well as dedicated showering changing areas as well. Back to a ground floor plan, you can see Middlesex Street is at the bottom of the page. We enter the building into a generous lobby that looks out onto the open-air atrium. I'll touch on the atrium later with some views and some enlarged plans of that, but we have our elevator and stairs situated in the middle of the building. And then on this floor, we have eight units, a mixture of studios, one beds and two beds. And then on the upper two floors, we have nine units with that lobby space being taken by that ninth unit. On the roof, we're proposing to keep it just a mechanical, for mechanical only. We have interfaced with Steve Stoll from the historic board to discuss location of mechanical equipment. We have sent him a package, an updated package of proposed mechanical locations that are set deeper within the footprint and are not visible from the street, from either Middlesex Street or the public alleyway in the rear. The proposed street wall, we, as I mentioned before, this building is a non-contributing historic building, and we are not seeking to rebuild or even design a historic representation or historic building of that sort. This is a modern building with contemporary design and construction methods, but we hope that, given the kind of strong bones of the existing structure, we're taking that and applying selective materials to really provide a kind of robust brick frame for the building and for the street wall that we believe creates a strong statement that is in keeping with the nature of downtown Lowell in a modern reinterpretation. And so we have a majority brick frame that is inset with cementitious fiber, large-format panels, and then a series of large European tilt-turn windows for the units, as well as aluminum storefront glazing at the entry. We have set back the ground floor units on the street front about five feet. That way, there's a bit of privacy with the introduction of the same picket fencing, as well as some planted hedges that'll offer some daylight and privacy to the ground floor tenants at street level. You can see just the juxtaposition of the proposed versus existing. You can see some of the structural lines that we are taking and using to our advantage to create the kind of strong frame and the presence of the street wall. The side of the building that's facing, that will face the landscape space, we propose to keep the existing brick that is there and cut new openings as we, as deemed necessary to provide windows to the units. These window locations shown here are approximate and for scope only. We need to, as I mentioned, the brick is load-bearing, and so we will need to conduct an exploratory demo and analysis with the structural engineer once the project is approved to determine how much window and where we can introduce new windows in this facade. You can see here again, this wall is mostly blank as it was a formerly demising wall, and then the proposed scope of windows above. In the rear of the site, we propose the same condition. It's mostly empty. You can see on the bottom, there are a number of openings that have been filled in with brick. We're again proposing to add new windows to this existing brick wall, again, with, following study with the structural engineer. You can see a rendering of the street front elevation. As I mentioned before, this is not a historic building, but we are attempting to respect the character and the vibrancy and richness of the neighborhood and this area with the introduction of brick and this kind of strong frame that is very front-facing with larger restrained, with a larger restrained palette of the dark gray, cementitious paneling and the windows. As you can see here, on the, at grade, we have the metal picket fencing as well as the planted hedge bushes, as I mentioned before. A corner view. So one thing that is different from this rendering as, from the planning board comments is that we have pushed this fence, which is set back from the sidewalk, back out to the zero lot line, so that this fence is again planer, co-planer with the existing street wall and the fencing of the unit setbacks. So the courtyard, as I mentioned before, the building is very deep, and so we introduced a new atrium to introduce daylighting for the units at the deepest part of the building. You can see in the lower right corner, there's the lobby at grade, and then we have introduced a new skylight as well, because this atrium is being punched down to the street level. With this skylight, the skylight will allow natural daylight to filter down into the pool below, which is directly below the skylight. And so we propose a kind of small area for tenants to use as an outdoor space that will be kind of enclosed with hedge bushes. As you can see on the left corner, in the left image, we have the skylight at the bottom, and then a series of planted hedges that will offer some privacy to the ground floor tenants. Some more views of the courtyard. You can see on the image to the left, the windows, openings in the very back of the view are the windows to the elevator lobbies on each floor, and then the skylight in the foreground. And then on the right is a small vignette of the outdoor space. Some sections, elevations of the courtyard. And then this is a section through the building and through the atrium and the pool. You can see this new atrium that we're cutting through with the skylight that will offer some daylight to the pool area in the basement. And then just another section perspective showing that same cut. And we have Middlesex Street on the right with the early parking garage beyond, and then the alleyway to the left. And that is the end of my presentation. I'd like to turn it back to John.
Thank you, Alex. So I think we've provided the board with a pretty thorough explanation, a review of the project. As I mentioned, this is a very important redevelopment. It's critical to this corridor of Middlesex Street and to the neighborhood. And with the blessing of this board for our variance request, we're able to move forward. So happy to answer any questions of the public or the board.
Thank you, Attorney Gary, for that information, and thank you to your team for that detailed presentation. So now we'll move the hearing to the public portion. Everyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor, seeing none that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, seeing none that portion of the public hearing is closed. Now we're going to open questions or comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This plan is a welcomed and innovative repurpose of this building. The plan, in my estimation, represents continued success, further complementing and enhancing the goals of the Jam Plan. I support the project and I thank its investors. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. Nuroge. Mr. Nuroge, the floor is yours, sir.
Mr. Chairman, this is another well-intentioned and project, well-thought-out, twenty-six much-needed building units and a very nice design. The lot has been vacant, so the use will be very beneficial to the city. It's apparent that the city has, as provided by this parking director, has enough public garage space for garage space for, for parking. And also it's close to the commuter, commuter rail, so that's an added benefit. And I'm also impressed that the developer has some micro-mobility plans and landscaping plans that are going to be beneficial to the area. So I have no objection to this petition and I'm willing to support it with the four conditions that were mentioned earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norobe. The chair recognizes Mr. Procop. Mr. Procop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Along with the fellow board members, I, I, well, first of all, thank you for, for a very detailed presentation. On a side note, I would say that I read an article a couple of weeks ago in the Boston Globe that says Lowell is coming back. And it's, it's projects like these that, that exemplifies what, what a good project can do for a city. I, and before, I had some questions, but I, the presentation answered them. So I would be in favor of this, of this project moving forward. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Procop. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions, but I was a little worried when I looked out here at the audience in the room and saw no one here representing. And I was like, this is too important a project. Where are they? Hey, I'm so happy that you're on the Zoom because that, that presentation was one of the rare moments that I've had on the 11 or so years I've spent here where the presentation was just so well-done. The documents are so well-conceived and complete. And, and they take a building that is sorely in need of rejuvenation and transforms it completely beyond anything that I thought could take place there. It's tremendous, absolutely tremendous. And the fact that you can accommodate that pool, so this is a wonderful amenity as well as the courtyard, it's just tremendous. I do have a question regarding something mundane and tedious but necessary, and that's the access to the waste receptacles. So the intention is for the waste receptacles to be stored in that pocket courtyard in the back by the transformer. Are they rolled out into the alley where a vehicle comes backing down the alley to, to empty them? Is that the intent? I'm just trying to understand. I, I'm hoping that it doesn't come forward onto Middlesex Street and emptied on Middlesex Street. So if you could just speak to how that process would work, I'm sure you have an answer.
So Brian or Alex, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the, the trash vehicle will back down the public alleyway, which is wide enough to accommodate the truck and pick up the truck at the back of the lot. Back of the pocket park, if you will.
That is correct. That is the plan.
Great, great. As long as everyone's on board with that, I think it would work. It's 20 feet wide, it should be fine. I know that they do that on less than 20 feet in other cities, so.
Right.
And I, I mean, it's, it's, it's tremendous. I, I agree with my fellow colleague, Mr. Norobe, that, that we should try to continue the four conditions from the planning board. They really speak to the elements that were addressed in the comments from the planning department. The landscaping, the screening of the trash area, the, I think it's the wastewater and was it the, the transportation, transportation plan? T? Can't think of the name, but if you could just refresh my memory, Attorney Gary?
Yes. So there are four conditions, Member McCarthy. The first is the applicant shall submit a landscape plan subject to DPD to sign. We've been working closely with the DPD staff to do that. The second condition is the applicant shall screen the trash storage area. That speaks for itself. The third condition is the applicant shall provide written, a written transportation demand management plan. We're pretty far along on that and we'll be submitting that soon. And the fourth and final condition is the applicant shall work with the city stormwater management team to finalize the stormwater design and obtain any required permits. Brian went into pretty good detail on where he's at with that condition.
Tremendous. And as I understand it, this would be the second project in the city for this particular developing team? And the second at Middlesex Street?
Yes. So one of the, one of the principles of this LLC is also the developer of 160 Middlesex Street, which is just a block away. That's Justin McFauling, who I see is now on the, the meeting. He's also done a couple of other projects on the, in the city. He's repurposed some brownstones at the top of Westford Street, which a terrific enhancement to that portion of Westford Street. He's also done a single-family home right on Central Street, between Central Street, I'm sorry, between Appleton Street and Green Street, right, right across the street from my, side of my office. Beautiful, single-family home in the middle, in the middle of the city. So, so the developer has a very good track record in the city. The city has been very complimentary of his work and this is yet another project that will be an incredible benefit to the city and specifically this neighborhood.
Wonderful to hear and I am really grateful for a developer, a development team like this coming into the city and participating in the rejuvenation of these structures and doing it in such a manner as we saw tonight is tremendous. So with those four conditions, I think I'd like to support this very much. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I agree with my fellow board members. This is a fantastic, there was a fantastic presentation. It's a fantastic project that's being put forth. I was, I'm blown away by a lot of the amenities that are there, especially keeping, be able to keep the pool, the skylight, the indoor courtyard, the outdoor courtyard as well to that, to that effect. And my only, my, 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 at my first glance concern was, was going to be the trash, trash pickup and the receptacle and, and how that was going to be accomplished. And I was curious about the back, whether the back alleyway could accommodate that, but it sounds like it's, that's, that's the way it's going to go and it's, it's going to be plenty of, plenty of space back there. So this, to, to, to your, what you said, Attorney Gary, correct. This is going to be an absolute benefit to the city, to the neighborhood and rejuvenating that area. And hopefully it'll start rejuvenating a lot of the commercial space that's in that area that's been long, long gone with, where we get more residences coming in. So I wish you the absolute best of luck on this. This is going to be fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. You know, I agree with my colleagues. Amazing presentation, Attorney Gary, by, by you and your team. And this, this building itself is very, just a very modern and futuristic building with so many amenities and, you know, as, as we all know, housing is needed in the city. And I think this, this will serve so many professional, young people, you know, a lot, a lot of different groups and categories of people. So I, I also want to support this project with, with the four conditions that, that we talked about from the planning board adopting those. So Attorney Gary, if you have no other questions or comments, we'll move to a vote, a motion to vote, sir.
No other comments and questions and we are agreeable to the incorporating the conditions from the planning board into this approval.
All right. Thank, thank you, Counselor. No further questions or comments from the board. We'll move to a vote. Can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2021-43 for variances at 78 Middlesex Street with the four previously adopted conditions from the planning board.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second, Mr. Procop. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Procop.
Approve with conditions.
Member Noroge.
Approve with conditions.
All right. Attorney Gary, you and your, your application has been approved. Wish you and your team and the applicant the best of luck. Thank you so much for coming out this evening.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Have a good evening. Moving on to the next agenda item, under new business, we have ZBA-2021-44. The petition is a variance. The applicant is Stephen Nego. The petition is, the applicant has applied his own with appeals for an addition to a single-family home at 65 Columbia Road. The property is located in the traditional single-family zoning district and requires one variance for maximum floor ratio, FAR under section 5.1 and any other relief required on the low zone ordinance. Is, is the representative here this evening for Columbia Road? Good evening. Sorry, your name and address the record and just tell us a little bit about your project.
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Stephen Nego on the 65 Columbia Road Lowell in Potluckville. I like to call it the little hollow patch of Lowell over here. I'm looking to add a small one-room addition to the rear of our house. It'll be a one-room office. Both the wife and I now work at home. My wife is now fully remote and will be from COVID and I am remote as well. We've, the, the one-room addition won't encroach to either one of my neighbors outside of the existing property lines or even to my property line. You know, basically it won't be seen once it's completed because we do have a white privacy fence up around the property. We were told that we need the variance based on all the plan and everything because I, and I'm not that familiar with it, but the rules were that the square footage compared to the square area of the land that we actually hold would exceed the percentage allowed by a small amount, so variance would be required. So we had the architect, the survey and everything put the plans together and have presented it to the board.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Nego. If you, if you don't have any more further, anything further about your petition, we'll move it to the public for a hearing.
I was told, no, I, I was told everything I needed to present it has been provided and I have nothing else really to add. I have, I'm open for questions. I think the, the plan's quite detailed and I have spoken to all the neighbors. Nobody is against it. Actually, they're all in favor of it, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Nego.
Thank you.
Now we'll open up questions or comments to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor, in favor, seeing none that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition, in opposition, seeing none that portion of public hearings closed. We're going to open up questions or comments to the board now. The chair recognizes Mr. Norobe. Mr. Norobe, the floor is yours, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is a fairly easy one for me to support. The floor area to lot area increase is only 7% and the lot is already non-conforming, so it's easy for me to support this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norobe. The chair recognizes Mr. Procop. Mr. Procop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can, I can only attest to Mr. Nego's request because he's been working from home for so long like the rest of us. I, I think, again, I agree with Mr. Noroge that this is a fairly easy thing. I don't think there's any issue. It doesn't look like there is any impact on his neighbors since there has been no negative responses, so I would vote in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Procop. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I have a, an observation here that the addition itself seems to fit within the criteria for setbacks. Is that correct, Francesca? So the setbacks here for the front yard, as a corner lot, do we, we call where the front door is the front yard and where the driveway is the side yard, I think, right? Correct?
So for corner lots, properties have two front, two fronts and two sides.
Okay.
So on Cogger Road and Columbia Road, both of those, those frontages are considered, the front, or the front yard setback would apply. And then there would be two side yard setbacks.
So the minimum front yard setback is 15 feet? And so we don't?
Correct.
We don't comply with that for the addition? I think we are under that. That's too bad. Which is sort of a condition with this, with this lot. So this is a, I'm sorry, the, the front yard is more than 15 feet, so we do comply. So it really complies with all the setbacks for the addition itself. What doesn't comply with the setbacks is the existing structure.
Correct.
So that's great. I mean, so they've done a great job of placing this addition to comply with, even on this tiny little lot, with the setbacks. And so really it is the FAR that really comes into play here that we're, and I, I, I think that this is such a small addition, I, I easily see some relief being given here, especially where it's providing some sorely needed home office space, so. And, you know, if it was a bigger addition, I think I would struggle with it more, but not with something the size. So I can easily see this variance being, looking upon it favorably. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy. And, and thank you, Ms. Giana, for the clarification. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I'm in agreement with my fellow board members with this. I think this meets all the requisite criteria for granting relief. I do have a one question, possibly, Mr. Nego. Looking at the site plan, it looks like there's a shed that's located in the back area that it says is going to be relocated. I mean, you don't have much space back there. How, how is it going to be relocated? Just going to repurpose, reconfigure it?
Yeah, that, that was put on there by the surveyor and what we were talking at the time he asked me about the shed. I said, well, the shed's there. I said, sooner or later, maybe one year, I'm going to have, get junk and get it out of here. I'm really not using it that much. It's a pretty good-sized shed. So we were just talking about it and said, yeah, one day it's, it's probably not going to be there because I really don't need it.
Okay.
Nothing will replace it. It might just be a little, one of those like giant Tupperware things to put my snowblower in it and that'd be it.
Yeah, I think that was one of the, that was one of the things that was kind of, so if you're not using it, I guess it's up to you if you want to get rid of it. I was just curious as to how you're going to, whether you're maybe going to shift it back to like, or shift it to the side or, but that would be difficult to do and probably very costly.
No, you're right.
Yeah. So that was, that was pretty much all I had. But again, I think you certainly meet all the criteria, especially with the size of the, size of the lot. I believe the relief can be granted without detriment to the public good and the intent of zoning won't be nullified on this. So certainly I will be in favor of granting you that this, your relief is requesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Hopefully the minimal relief requested provides for maximum comfort. I'll vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. I agree, I agree with my colleagues, Mr. Nego. I think the relief you're seeking is very minimal. The addition actually fits in well with the home and the neighborhood. It's, it's very, it's not intrusive. You could have, you could have gone bigger, but I think this is very, it's fair. It fits in the need that, that you need and it fits in still within the, the intent of the neighborhood and the characteristic and zoning. So I'll support this as well. So we have no further. So, if we have no further questions or comments, we'll move to a motion and a vote for the variance.
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2021-44 for variance for maximum floor area ratio for 65 Columbia Road.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second, Mr. Callahan. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Member Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Procop.
Approve.
Member Noroge.
Approved.
All right, Mr. Nagel, your variance has been approved. We wish you the best of luck on your addition and with your project. Thank you for coming out this evening, and have a good night, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, boy.
All right. Moving on to our next scheduled agenda item under other business, we have just minutes for approval for September 27, 2021. Do we have any questions, comments, edits to the minutes for September 27, 2021 by any of the board members? Seeing none, can we have a motion to approve the minutes for September 27, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for September 27, 2021.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy to approve the meeting minutes for September 27.
Second.
Second, Mr. Brier. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Peck.
Approve the minutes.
Member Callahan.
Approve the minutes for September 27, 2021.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the meeting minutes September 27, 2021.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Procop.
Approve minutes September 27.
Member Noroge.
Approve minutes.
All right. The minutes for September 27 have been approved. If there's no other questions, comments, anything from the board members, we'll move to adjourn the meeting. Can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second, Mr. Callahan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.